Haven't heard anything today.
Call to order this special working session Bath County Board of Education, October 28th, 2024, 6:00 PM. Discussion of tonight's agenda. Item three, presentation by KG SG PSC Audit Report. We're ready for you.
That was quick. It worked out perfect. Well, I just gave you a hard copy if you want to follow along with a hard copy. The electronic copy either way, but on pages three, four, and five is our independent auditors' report. To summarize, it says, "We have audited the company financial statements as of June 30, 2024 for Bath County School District. In our opinion, the financial statements are barely presented in all mature respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles." That is a clean, unmodified opinion. We conducted our audit in accordance with all professional standards. Management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements." It goes on to say what our responsibilities are for the audit, and also mentions there's some required supplementary information, mainly some combining schedules and pension schedules. And then on page five, there's also some supplementary schedules that our audit opinion does extend to, and then last paragraph, there's a report in accordance with government auditing standards, which I'll go through in a few minutes. Starting on page six is the management's discussion and analysis. And it kind of just hit some highlights. You began the year with total cash of about 20.3 million, ended the year with cash of 25.8 million. That's an increase of about 5.5 million. The general fund had about 18.4 million in revenue and spent about 18.6 million in expenses. Your debt increased about 743,000. Net pension liabilities, they decreased overall. The CER's pension decreased about 1.1 million, and KTRS decreased 144,000. And the OPEB liabilities also decreased with the CERS actually being a prepaid asset of 136,000, which was a terrific turnaround. I'm guessing investments was the key to that. It was a pretty good year for investments. Going on through page eight, this gives a summarized and a comparative. You can compare to prior year. So it's overall, combining all the funds, full accrual, and a comparison to the prior year. So total assets, about 72.4 million. Total liabilities, about 43.5 million. So your total net position, about 26.8 million, an increase over the prior year, which was about 15.1 million. Going on down the page, you can see total revenues, almost 41 million. Total expenses, almost 29 million. Carrying on to the next page, revenues over expenses, about 11.8 million. So, pretty good year. Capital assets, that's where the majority of your change over the prior year has occurred, is you have some ongoing construction. So there was an increase in capital assets, about 9.3 million. As I mentioned to you, your debt did, your total debt outstanding at the end of the year was about 25 million. It goes on to mention that you did budget your required contingency for the next fiscal year. You're required to budget 2%. You budgeted 3.71%. So I'm going to skip the next few pages. I'm going to turn to page 12. This is the individual fund financial statements, the balance sheets. So here you can see the general fund had about 6.9 million in cash at the end of the year. Construction fund had about 14.9 million in cash. You still had, if you look down the page in the construction fund, about 7.1 million of the state grant money that they gave you for the construction left to spend. And then if you turn to page 14, it shows the revenue and expenses for each of those funds. I already mentioned to you, your total revenues and expenses for the general fund. If you go on down, you will see that there was an increase in the general fund, overall 370,000. And the construction fund, you used some of that state grant money, about 3.2 million. Your total expenses for construction was 10.3 million. You issued some bonds, 2,660,000. If you turn to page 16, it shows your food service, childcare, and preschool funds. You had cash in the food service fund of a little over 3 million. Childcare, about 98,000. Page 17 shows the revenue and expenses for each of those funds. You had an increase in food service fund, about 560,000, a decrease in the childcare fund of 99,000, and the preschool fund, a decrease of about 1,300. Page 18, on a cash flow basis, each of those funds, there was an increase in cash for food service, about 331,000, decrease in childcare of 113,000, and preschool, about 1,300. Page 19 and 20 shows your trust funds. You have about 46,000 in trust funds. If you turn to page 21, shows your budget and actual for the general fund. And if you look down through there, you'll see that it's favorable budget comparison all the way down. Revenues came in about 1.7 million more than budgeted, and expenses came in over 4 million under budget, so favorable budget variances. Page 22 is your grant budget and actual, and that can kind of fluctuate, so. Because a lot of those grants will carry over from year to year. I'm not sure what that was. Starting on page 23, goes into the notes to the financial statements. Not a lot. The first footnote just describes your accounting policies. No significant changes in accounting policies for the year. Page 32, all of your cash was either insured or collateralized. Page 33 lists out all of your bonds and KISTA loans. At the bottom of 33 shows your debt payments that'll come due for next year. Totals, about 2.5 million, of which the state will kick in, about 760,000. Page 34 shows a summary of the beginning of year debt. You issued 2,660,000 of bonds, and you paid down about 1,740,000 on the bonds. Page 35 shows a summary of capital assets, and I mentioned to you, you had quite a bit of activity in the construction. Overall, 11 million dollars of additions there. On 36, it starts getting into the pension plan disclosures, and again, I'm not going to go through those. Just noting that all of those liabilities did go down this year, which was good. Page 53, footnote 10, mentions that you did have construction commitments at the end of the year, about 5.9 million. Page 54, footnote 14, shows your on behalf payments, and these are basically payments that the state is making on your behalf, mainly for teacher retirement and health insurance, and some on debt service. Those total payments are about 5.6 million. They are reflected in these financial statements as a revenue and as an expense. Then it gets to the required supplemental information. The first so many schedules are pension and OPEB related. Again, that's, I'm not going to go through those. Just noting that the plans are better funded than they have been in the past. So, if you want to flip to. Page 69 shows the non-major governmental funds. So district activity funds, student activity funds, SEEK building fund, debt service funds, those are over there. They don't have as much activity, so they're kind of lumped together. Page 71 shows your activity funds by school. Started the year with a little over 250,000 of cash, and ended the year with about 248,000 of cash. Receipts about 283,000, and disbursements 286,000 in total. The next page, 72, is a detail of the high school. This is something that the Department of Ed wants to see. You can see here, about 114,000 at the high school. Next page, 73, 74, is the scheduled expenditures of federal awards. You got and spent about 10.5 million in federal money. Were required to perform a single audit, since you got more than 750,000. Your major program was the ESER funds, which was about 6.1 million. Of the 10.5 million, which I'm assuming will be gone next year. Page 75, 76, is the independent auditors' report on internal control and on compliance in accordance with government auditing standards. And basically, as part of doing the audit, we're required to look at your internal controls over financial reporting, test for compliance with laws and regulations, and if we had any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, they would be in this report, but we did not have any of those. The next report, 77, 78, 79, is the one that's required for the single audit, which covers your major program, which was the ESER program. And for the ESER program, we're required to test for compliance and look at the internal controls over the program, and if we had any findings, they would be in this report on that program, and we didn't have any, so it is a clean report as well. Next page, 80, is the schedule of findings and question costs, which the federal government requires. It's a nice little summary for them. You'll see unmodified opinions, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and basically no findings. Next page, there were no findings in the prior year either that would require us to follow up. And then on page 83, 84, is our management letter points. I said we didn't have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, but we're also, KDE requires us, any little thing that we find, to include as a management letter point, and that's what these are. So we have a few little items here. Gosh. A Booster Club annual financial report was not being, was not submitted on a timely basis at the high school and at Crossroads. There was one instance in which a donation over 250 dollars at Owingsville Elementary, the form wasn't properly completed. There was one instance of a deposit in excess of 100 dollars at Crossroads that wasn't deposited timely. And then one instance where the annual financial report at Owingsville wasn't signed by the principal. So these are, in our mind, not material, but other items that they aren't in compliance with red books are required to be listed out, so. That's why they're there. In the back is our separate letter, which is the letter to governance, which does mention that there was a couple accounting policies that were adopted, however, they weren't significant to the financial statements. There are estimates in the financial statements, depreciation, accrued sick leave, right to use leased assets, pension liability and OPEB liability are all considered estimates. However, we have tested those and the assumptions that were used in making those calculations and determine they're reasonable as part of our audit. We encountered no difficulties in dealing with management during our audit. We had no past audit adjustments, no disagreements with management, no outside consultations, and basically no other issues that we feel like we need to bring to your attention at this time. That is a clean report as well. Any questions? We've kind of passed, but there's a lot of, lot of information here.
Anyone have any questions? Sounds good to me. Real good.
Yep, good report. We've got to submit this by November 15th to this day, so.
Thank you very much. Item four, discussion of consent items.
On the consent agenda, everything is, this month is, there's no additional add-ons, I don't believe, I'll go through. Just for note, there was an additional fundraiser added. We approve fundraisers at the beginning of the year, and then the principals go through those. But you've got your minutes, your financial statement, your claims, superintendent expenditures. On travel, there was an addition today. The senior trip has been placed on there, so feel free to look at that. Use of facilities, there were no requests. We leave that open, just in case there's a last minute addition. That way, we don't have to send out an updated agenda. On the grants, there are multiple, multiple grants. We're doing a very good job of seeking funds through these grants. They're also in the portal, in the attachment, in the rationale. You've got your monthly financial reports to pay bills through October 31st, your audited financial report, and your FY '24 audit report. Those are the consent agenda.
Item five, appointment of a board member to the school calendar committee.
So every year, a board member's required to be on there in the regular session. We actually have, it'll be item eight, I believe. Yes, we'll need to elect one, and so in the working session, you can, if you choose, discuss who would like to be on that committee. That would be fantastic.
Item six, discussion and update on all construction projects and change order proposals.
Good evening. Just an update on the high school. It's pretty much, we're on phase six. That's sort of an area B on the lower level, and we'll be, that's about six classrooms and hallway. We'll be working on that area, probably up close to the, toward that latter part of the year, and that's pretty much going to put us over there on the gym side and that lobby and those areas out in there. And, and then plus, we got some, still have some work. We've got some doors, still waiting on the doors to replace that, I guess what used to be your main entrance many years ago. You know, we finally decided what we were going to do, so we've got some flooring to do and some, but we need to get the doors installed first. And then, as far as the Chanel, their Levek facility, we're, we're pretty much complete, working on site work. We've got a punch list we're trying to complete, but that job's wrapping up. We're just, like I say, working on a punch list. And so that's, that's pretty much, pretty much it. Be glad to take any questions.
Is there air conditioning right now in the gymnasium? Is it working?
Yes, I think so.
The kids say it's really hot in there.
There could be some units that may not be working, but I, I do think we have, that was brought up last month, I think. I think we do have some air conditioning out. Maybe I can find out between now and your board meeting tonight.
Okay, thanks.
I will check on that.
Okay, good enough.
So, just to tack on to what David mentioned, we've provided a punch list for the Chanel building, because that's been pretty much completed for the inside of the building and usable for its intended purpose. The punch list also includes site items, because we know most of the site has been repaved or its fencing is up. So that's a good sign for the Chanel project, because it's hit a milestone, and once those list items are completed, then the Chanel project will be pronounced as closed or completed. The high school one, we did provide a interior, partial interior punch list for the ceilings that we do know are ready to go, but as David mentioned, there's one area closest to this auditorium that is currently still being worked on. So beyond that one, all the other spaces have been punched and are basically ready for Ms. Brandonberg to use, you know, as she plans to use them. And that just excludes the gym, because we haven't done the gym quite yet. When it comes to the change order proposals, you have two in front of you tonight, one for each of the projects. I'll start with the high school one. The high school one came up from the contractor, once they realized, if you can imagine, the double height, old front entry area. There's a crosswalk for the second floor, there's a landing, basically, with a soffit that aligns that entire thing. When they laid out the sprinkler lines, they realized they have to kind of lower that soffit by a few inches. So the estimate for $2,026 was for the material and laborers to frame out that soffit, to drop it down lower, and refinish it, repaint it, so that the new ceiling that goes in is going to be at the right height to what the actual sprinkler line needs to be. So that had to happen. We weren't foreseeing us to lower that soffit until they started laying it out for the sprinkler and for the duct, but that's what that price is for, is once they laid it all out, they had to get lower. So to do that, they had to find about $2,000 to cover that labor and material for that soffit area. The next change order proposal is within the high school still, but it's for the air compressor relocation that's technically a part of the Levek project. So if you can imagine, the information technology lab area that got brand new flooring and ceilings and whatnot as part of the Levek project, it started with a compressor, existing compressor, living in a closet that happened to be right in front of the electrical panel. The project called to replace that compressor, so we just replaced it with a better one at the exact same location. The inspector came by and said, hey, that can't work, even though it was already designated as the location for the air compressor before we replaced it with a new one. So the first option was to price how much it is it to relocate that brand new air compressor into the mechanical room. That would mean a lot longer of a run for the air compressor lines and power, and so to avoid that, we had to move it from one closet in that lab area to another closet in that same lab area, to reduce the overall cost for repiping it and putting power. Downside is, with the total of, I think, $7,000 on the agenda, 5,000 of that is just for power, because they had to redo some work that they had already completed, and add more electrical work to, to put power in that closet that is a new location for the air compressor. The remaining balance of like $2,700, that's for them to do all of the piped air compressed routing that they would have had to do if they moved it into the mechanical room, but instead, it's $2,700 to move it slightly closer to where it is now, but it's still more money. In fewer words, the inspector required us to move it to make that work. We found a better location in the same lab, so it's still accessible to the instructor. It just comes at the cost of $7,000 and some change for power, compressed air piping, and I think some drain work for condensate lines to that air compressor. So two change orders, both in the high school, one for Levek, and one for the soffit in the corridor for that tall entry area. But any questions, I'll try my best to answer them.
I think we're, I think we're good.
Okay.
I know last month I said I would check about the, how far along we'd be on the gym, and I think everybody's, I don't think it's going to happen, and I think we pretty much know that. But I did meet with the contractors, and they just feel like it's, as late as we have to start, there's no way that they would have that gym ready by May 17th. So I just wanted to, we met, discussed, pretty lengthy discuss, discussion about that, so.
So we'll probably have to move graduation?
Yes. Consider alternate locations, so. But I just want to let you know that I did meet with the contractors, just to confirm.
Okay.
I'm convinced that it's not.
Not, not good news, but.
Pardon?
I said not good news, but.
Yeah.
At least we got a heads up.
Right. Give as much notice as possible.
Item seven, discussion of KET's first offer of assistance.
Every year, we get three offers of assistance, three times a year, so this is the first offering from KETS through KDE. They're offering $19,602 to be used for technology. Just the board must understand, this requirement is that the board must provide matching funds. We will definitely spend that amount on technology, so I would recommend that we accept that first offer when the time comes.
Item eight, discussion of purchase of school buses.
School buses have a lifespan, and so what we've done, and it was well established for, I ever came here, is that we tried to purchase two a year, one through general funds and one through KISTI. But we purchased two buses a year, and that's what we're asking for, is the board to approve tonight, the purchase of two new buses to maintain our fleet. Are we doing KISTI and just both general fund? This should be both general fund. When you, well, Mr. Detwiler had to be somewhere tonight, but when you do KISTI, you're financing, so if we're, we're just purchasing outright, it'll save us a little money in the sense that we won't be paying the interest rate on it. Yes, ma'am.
Item nine, discussion of second reading of revised policy 03.225 expense reimbursement.
And this will just be the final reading to codify this. This is the same one as 03125 that was for the certified. Instead of trying to track down and bring all your receipts, employees are just given a per diem per day, an amount they can spend on a, out of town or overnight trips.
Item.
It was $59 per day.
Item 10, discussion of schools resource officers contract in the Bath County, Bath County Schools Resource Officers contract.
Ms. Williams and I had a conversation the other day, and in a moment, I'll allow her to speak. She'll be able to explain it much better than I. But the SRO contracts, as we know at the last board meeting, contain some language that can make our district responsible for payment of services performed by our SROs outside the scope of their responsibility here. And so the board directed Ms. Williams to contact Ms. Hunt Price and discuss that, and so tonight, I'll be asking the board to discuss with Ms. Williams and take any recommendations she may have to address the language to these contracts.
Thank, thank you. After the board meeting, the last board meeting, and after I read the SRO contracts, there were two contracts. There's a contract between the sheriff's department and with the county, and then there's also the contract between the sheriff's. there's also the contract between the sheriff's office and with the school. So, and this has been a traditional, majority of the provisions are traditional contracts between schools and SROs and the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department pays a lump sum, and then whatever's left over, we pay. So, there were some open clauses there that I had some concerns about, some rollover, overtime, and then if, if the time, the 40 hours hadn't been expended, and then where those SROs were going to be, whether under the contract, they're going back to the sheriff's department, we felt like we're paying them, and we think that there are other things they could do. So, I sent a letter to Kim Hunt Price, and she called me. We had a really good conversation, and I think that she agrees with all of the provisions that I put out in the letter. And so, she just asked that I go ahead, and it's her contract, but I have to somehow get it revised and I think put it on the next agenda for everybody to take a look at it. But I think we're all in agreement. I think there were just some other things, and Kim was very, very nice about it all and very flexible and agreed to all the provisions that I asked for, so.
Item 12, adjourned.
Call to order this board of education regular meeting October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, seven oh one P M. Bath County High School auditorium. Discussion and possible action on tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
One second.
Have a motion by Brenda, second by John. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll have our pledge of allegiance and silent devotion. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in all.
Please take a few moments of silent devotion. Thank you. Item four is student spotlight Bath County Middle School.
Good evening. Mr. Smallwood is giving everyone up there a flyer. We're doing something a little bit different this evening. So we are going to give you a sneak peek of our more stories in spooky science. This has been going on, I think this is our twelfth year, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. So it's been going on for at least a decade, a little bit longer. So it's a long standing event. And every year we do this, we have certain things that we do, certain staples. So we always have readings by our students, science demonstrations, and then we have a chili cook off. So I just wanted to present that to you all because it is a really good event that we put on at BCMS and invite you all out. And at this time, we are going to ask some students to come up and do a sneak peek of this. Our students who will be reading tonight or presenting will be Jasmine Patton, Grace Pick, Blake Sparks, and Bradley Beagle. Before they come up, I'm going to ask Ms. Moore, our English teacher, to give us a little bit of information about what they're presenting tonight.
Tonight we are presenting readings, dramatic readings from Edgar Allan Poe's works. And we are also presenting one student's story that she wrote herself read by another student. They worked really hard and I know are going to do a great job. So we're going to begin with Blake Sparks.
This is a poem by, this is a poem of Edgar Allan Poe's. It's called El Dorado. Gaily but aight, a gallant knight in sunshine and in shadow had journeyed along, singing a song in search of El Dorado. But he grew old, this knight told bold, and over his heart a shadow fell. As he found no spot of ground that looked like El Dorado, and as his strength fell to matling, he met a pilgrim'd shadow. Shadow said he, where can it beat this land of El Dorado? Over the mountains of the moon, down the valley of the shadow? Ride boldly ride, the shade replied, if you seek for El Dorado.
And now we have Jasmine Patton reading a short story by Emma Conyers, who will be presenting tomorrow night.
The fog. The morning before the skies were clear, the meadows full of daisies, and no worries in sight. This morning, the same, the next slightly different. Hardly no change. Progressively the flowers became too wilted, petals falling onto the green grass, slowly turning into a dying gray. Each morning the wind howls, more and more, sounding like screaming women, full of sorrow, clouds rolling in as a dark smoke. That feeling of relaxation was gone, until one day it stopped. Peace and stillness was gone, except the fog that gave an eerie feeling, that something was there, like something was there, something that was sad. A chill down anybody's spine who came near this one, this one tree. This tree stand on the ground of a horse that waste there in the fog. There was a woman that too was full of sadness. I was so scared to go towards her, and I proceeded. I needed to know her story. As I came closer and closer, I felt sad, maybe even angry. I was a foot in front of her. The next second she told me how, her whole story, a house with two, two stories. She had a husband and two children, a little girl and a boy. The little girl appeared to be seven, and the little, little boy looked three. They lived in a very nice neighborhood with good neighbors. One day, a bad storm hit, the thunder, lightning, high winds, and cold rain. The horses shook, and trees fell, dripping, 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 the sound of, of leaks made in the roof. Suddenly a tornado siren went off. Full of terror, they ran down to the basement. Everyone was down there, except the dog. The woman went back up to bring the dog to safety. The wind blew harder and harder. A strike of lightning struck. Bang! I was back in the fog that seemed to be going away. I've lived in this neighborhood since I was three and never noticed the tree before. I didn't know that tragic behind it. I said to the woman, she sighed and said, it's fine, the dog made it to the, the basement. The, the woman disappeared into the fog, and the fog let. Then I realized she was a ghost, maybe a spirit. A dog came up to me and looked up at me. I went home. The dog followed, decided to keep it. I, I named her fate for how fate brought me here. Search newspapers articles that said the family moved after their house was destroyed by the storm. All was at peace once again.
Okay, and now we're going to do Reader's Theater of the Raven, the Simpsons version. And all four will come up and present.
The Simpsons Raven by Edgar Allan Poe.
Hey, it's Halloween, what the book boy?
For your information, I'm about to read you a classic tale, terror by Edgar Allan Poe.
Wait a minute, that's a school book!
Don't worry Bart, you won't learn anything, it's called The Waving.
Once upon a time, a midnight dreary, while I pondered weak and weary, over many a quaint and curious volume, a forgotten lore, while I nodded nearly tapping, napping. Suddenly, there came a tapping, as of someone gently rapping at my chamber door.
'Tis a visitor, tapping at my chamber door, only this and nothing more.
Are we scared yet?
Bart, don't be wooed, how was an establishing mood?
Ah, distinctly I remember, it was in the bleak December, and each, each separating dying ember wot its ghost upon the floor. Eagerly I wished the morrow family I had sought to borrow. From my books, sir, ceased of sorrow, sorrow for the lost Lenore.
Oh, Lenore!
For the rare and radiant maiden, whom the angels name Lenore, nameless here forevermore. And the silk and sad, uncertain rustling of each purple curtain threw me, filled me with fantastic terrors, never thought before, so that now it's still the beating of my heart I stood repeating.
'Tis a visitor entering entrance at my chamber door, this it is and nothing more.
Presently, myself grew stronger, hes- hesitating than no longer.
Sir or madam, truly your forgiveness I implore, but the fact is, I was napping, and so gently you came rapping, and so faintly you came tapping, tapping at my chamber door, that I scarce was sure I heard you.
Here I opened the wide door.
This better be good.
Darkness there and nothing more.
You don't have been scared of nothing.
What?
Anything!
Back into the chamber turning, all my soul within me burning. Soon again, I heard a tapping, somewhat louder than before.
Surely that is something at my window, that is, let me see then what there at is, and this mystery explore.
Open here, I flung the shutter, with men, with many a flirt and flutter. And there stepped a stately raven of the sa- stately days of yore. Not the least ob- obedience may he, not a minute stopped or a stay he. But when man, lord or lady, perched above my chamber door, perched upon a bust of powis, just above my chamber door, perched and sat and nothing more.
Though thy crest be shorn and shaven, though art sure no craving, tell me, tell me, what thy lordly name is, on those night with platoon and shore.
Gaston Graham. Pro the raven.
Eat my sword!
Bart, stop it, The Waving says nevermore, and that's all it ever says.
Okay, okay.
Demi thought, the air grew denser, perfumed by some unseen censer, swung by Sir Ham, whose footfalls trinkled on the tufted floor.
Wrench thy god hath with thee by these angels, he has sent thee, respite and nippen thee from thy memories of Lenore. Quaff, oh quaff, this kind of nippen thee, and forgot, forget this lost Lenore.
Pro the raven.
Nevermore!
To be con- this will be continued on the morrow's smore story.
Thank you very much.
These guys did an excellent job of showing you just a little bit of what we have going on tomorrow, but it's four thirty from, six thirty if you all would like to come out and hear some more reading, so, let's give them another round of applause, please, they did a great job, thank you.
Next, we'll have the student spotlight for Bath County High School.
This year, we were lucky enough to get a grant for JAG, and I hired Ms. Wayne Ann Cottle to be our teacher. She has brought some students here tonight with her that I'll allow her to introduce, and they have a short presentation for you guys.
Good evening, I'm Wayne Ann Cottle, the JAG specialist for Bath County High School. With me, I have brought several, several of our newly elected JAG Career Association officers. I'll ask you to raise your hand when I, when I say your name. We have our Executive Vice President Alexis Armstrong, our Secretary Catherine Bianchi, and our Vice President of Social Awareness Maddie Shaw. JAG, and I'll ask, oh, we've got her, we've got there, alright. Our mission at JAG Kentucky is to give all young people the opportunity to reach their full potential, regardless of their background. Next slide, please. JAG, seniors who graduate from JAG programs have a ninety-six percent graduation rate nationwide, as opposed to an eighty-five percent graduation rate at large in the United States. Eighty-four percent of JAG graduating seniors report positive outcomes. We define that in JAG, is they are either employed or seeking some sort of post-secondary education or training. Next slide, please. In the JAG classroom, and we are a traditional classroom, we cover sixty-four competencies throughout the course of the year. We use a project-based approach. We seek not only classroom instruction, but employer engagement through meaningful connection with local and statewide employers. Not only are we attempting to make connections with local businesses, Toyota, Marathon, among others, are statewide sponsors of JAG. We also employ a trauma-informed approach, because we all know, our students are facing, they, they come from, they have barriers, they're facing battles we, we have no clue about. And so, the JAG specialist model trains us in trauma, trauma-informed approaches to best meet the needs of the students, to help them overcome those barriers for opportunity. Next slide, please. JAG is a class and a club. The JAG Career Association is where we put a lot of what we learn in a classroom to work and into motion. Not only do we explore career pathways, we make employer connections, we look at educational opportunities and choices. What schools are there, how can you get, how can you get these schools paid for? What do you need to do to, you know, we'll look at applications, we'll, we'll do whatever they need to do to make, help these kids make informed choices about their future. We also, much like FFA, FBLA, we have competitive events at the regional, state, and national levels. We engage in leadership development, as you see with our leaders here. We will talk about what does a leader do. And, one of the most exciting things is we believe in service. Service learning is an integral part of the JAG model. Not only are we doing service throughout the course of every week and day when the opportunity arises, JAG, part of the JAG requirement is that we have a year-long service learning project. And it just so happened this year, and I'll give you a, a window into what we're working on at Bath County High School. Through my previous employment, I have connections with Kentucky Adult Protective Services and the Gateway Elder Abuse Council. They reached out to me in September. Kentucky APS seeks to create a curriculum for elder abuse prevention for Kentucky high schools. So, they reached out to us, Ms. Brandonberg and I have discussed this. Our JAG Career Association will develop a curriculum for elder abuse prevention, lessons to be taught to Kentucky high school students. Every June is Elder Abuse Awareness Month in Kentucky. And every June fifteenth, there is a recognition ceremony and a proclamation signing and the, and the rotunda at the Capitol. Our plan, and I, I've met with the folks at APS, our plan is, at that event next June, our officers and myself and Ms. Brandonberg, we will join the proclamation ceremony and unveil our curriculum. And there, it will be taken statewide for all the Kentucky high schools to, to take advantage of. So, that's, that's our service project this year, we're very excited about that. Next slide, please. So, what does, what do we do in JAG class every day? We don't look like a regular classroom. We learn how to be a part of a team, we do team-building activities, we learn job skills. And not just actual job skills, we, we do resumes, we're writing resumes right now. We will learn how to fill out job applications, we will do mock job interviews. But we will also do soft skills, how to be on time for work. When's the best time, should you really call in today? Is this necessary? How to make those choices to give yourself the best opportunity? How to get along with people at work, even when you don't want to? And as part of that, you know, there's a lot of interpersonal skills we talk about. There's a counseling component to this. I'm required to give so many, what they call guidance counselor, guidance, guidance counseling hours per month to students. And that can be, you know, hey, what's going with your grades, you doing alright? I saw math, we're struggling, can I help, what do you need? Or, hey, I saw you had a issue in the lunchroom at lunch, let's talk about it, what's going on? We do all of that in the JAG classroom. And life skills. We talk about how to live, how to do life. We're going to do lessons on what is health insurance, how does it work, especially when it comes from an employer? We'll talk about all that stuff, we'll talk about, where do you go to, how do you get a mortgage? How do you open a bank account? I've had many people, we're going to talk about how to read cursive writing and how to sign your name in cursive, because these are skills that not all our students have now. In addition, for graduating seniors, we do a year's worth of follow-up with them. That is a monthly check-in for that first year after graduation. What are you doing, what do you need? Maybe they need help refining their resume for a job they're trying to go for. Maybe they're having trouble with their college applications. Whatever it is, we are there to help for that year of follow-up. Next slide, please. At the end of the day, the goal of JAG, which of course stands for Jobs for America's Graduates, and next, next slide? Employer and employee benefits. We want our students as employees to have the most opportunities and the best opportunities they can get. And we want our local employers to have the best employees they can find here in Bath County. Next slide. Because at the end of the day, the goal is to give these kids a good life. That's, that's everything. And the goal is to give them that good life here, in Bath County, hopefully. Not all of them are going to stay here. But we would love to contribute to a system where our employers are happy with the employees that the school system is providing, the, the, the higher education, they're, they're happy with the students we're sending on. But that these kids have opportunities, that if they want to make a great life, they don't have to leave to do it. And they understand how the world works at the end of the day. And they're not just thrown out there, flailing. That's what we're doing. I would like to ask our Executive Vice President Alexis Armstrong, she has just a couple of words about the JAG program so far.
As Mrs. Cottle said, my name is Alexis Armstrong, and I'm the Executive Vice President for Bath County JAG. I'm a senior this year, so I only get to do JAG for one year, but for the past three months that I've been in it, I really love it. Two of my favorite lessons that we've done so far is we dove into what kind of career we want to have and how we can get to that career from Bath County. And what kind of life we want to live, and how those two things coincide with each other. Mrs. Cottle has taught us a lot about how to work with others and dream big dreams and live the life you want to live. And I am very excited to be a part of growing JAG in the one year I've got left to do it, thank you.
Thank you, and in closing, I, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight, I appreciate Ms. Brandonberg, she's a huge supporter of our program, just in every way possible, Mr. Maynard as well, they're both, they're both just wonderful to work with. I would ask, I'm available at the high school, if you all have connections, community connections that you think would be beneficial to these students, business leaders, community leaders, anyone, please pass those along to me. We're looking to connect people with our JAG students. And I'm always available if you have any questions, I'm, I'm right here in the building, and I appreciate you, thank you.
I would like to thank the Board for approving this for us this year. I will say our students at Bath County High School are truly blessed by the opportunity they were given, thank you guys.
Item, item five, Superintendent and Board Communication.
Board for reference, items five A Personnel Actions and five B our fundraisers are just for your review, no action will be taken. For my communication this evening, it's no doubt I'm going to talk about the nickel as we proceed with next Tuesday being the election. But I want to share, when I had written this, if you listen to me at all, you keep hearing me saying six hundred and eight thousand dollars from the state. The state's going to give us an additional six hundred and eight thousand dollars every single year. So, today I looked on the SEEK for twenty-four, twenty-five, that's where that money comes from, from the state. It's tentative, but they have raised that by fifty-one thousand dollars to six hundred and sixty thousand and change. And so, if the nickel should pass, we'll get six hundred and sixty thousand, and where I'd said over twenty years we'd get twelve million, that's already gone to thirteen plus. And so, that number over time will continue to get higher, but just using six hundred and sixty for twenty years as a base, looking at thirteen million dollars free from the state. So, what I had written, Bath County Schools is currently facing a significant challenge with over sixty-five million dollars in critical building and facility needs. To meet this demand and invest in the future of our schools, the Board of Education has taken bold and forward-thinking steps by proposing a nickel tax. This tax will generate an additional six hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars each year from the state, and more importantly, will immediately increase our bonding potential by over fifteen million dollars. This increase allows us to make transformative improvements across all our facilities, ensures that every need is met over time. Passing this nickel tax not only helps fulfill our schools' needs, but also offers substantial financial benefits for our community. With the state covering a significant portion of our building costs through equalization of the nickel, Bath County taxpayers will experience a reduced local tax burden. In the long term, this initiative means that this Board can seek lower tax rates once the nickel is in place, providing ongoing financial relief. The end result is a win-win for Bath County. The district's facility needs are addressed, and the taxpayers can look forward to a more manageable tax structure in the future. The Board of Education is committed to creating a brighter future for Bath County students and community, and the nickel tax is a powerful step in that direction, thank you.
Item six, discussion. Item six, Discussion and Possible Action. Approving the following items, A, minutes of September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four, B, September financial statements, C, claims, D, superintendent expenditures, E, travel, F, use of facility, G, grant, H, review of all monthly financial reports of all funds, I, pay bills through October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, J, annual audited financial report, the AFR, K, FY twenty-four audit report.
My second.
I have a motion by Carla, a second by John, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven is public comments, I don't think we have any. Thank you. Item eight, appoint board member to school calendar committee. Would anyone like to be on the committee? I was on it last year, and of course we go to Florida every year, so I'm not here, which... Uh, Ms. Watkins, when do you, when are you all gonna meet?
I'm gonna meet before the board meeting.
Okay. So, in no, any, sometime in November?
It's perfectly fine, board, if you'd like to self-nominate as well, so.
Man, if I'm here, I don't mind at all, cause I'm, I'm retired, so, but I know most of everybody else, well Brenda doesn't work, but she's probably busy. I'll do it, if that's alright with everyone.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Barbara Razor to the, uh, school calendar committee.
I'll second.
I have a motion by John, a second by Brenda, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Talked myself right into it.
I was gonna make the motion before she backed down.
Item nine, Discussion and Possible Action on Change Order Proposal for PR twenty-five corridor soffit lowering for new sprinkler and duct at a cost of two thousand twenty-six dollars add-on to the BCHS HVAC renovation BG twenty-two dash three seventy-six.
My second.
I have a motion by Carla, a second by John, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Item ten, Discussion and Possible Action of Change Order Proposal for PR twenty-two air compressor and dryer inspector required relocation at a cost of seventy-eight hundred seventy-three dollars add-on to the Bath County LEVAC Phase Two BG twenty-two dash five twenty.
My second.
I have a motion by Carla, a second by Brenda, any discussion?
I have some discussion. Uh, you know, we're, we're gonna go into a new location. Are we one hundred percent sure when we put it in that new location that our inspector's gonna okay it?
Yes, uh, the contractor made sure that any other concerns that the inspector would have in the new closet, that there weren't any, and that all the connections that were required were included in this price, so short answer is yes, there shouldn't be any other, uh, issues with this new closet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven, Discussion and Possible Action on CAT's First Offer of Assistance.
I'll make the motion to approve the CAT's First Offer of Assistance.
I have a motion by Brenda, a second by Carla, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Item twelve, Discussion and Possible Action on the Purchase of Two School Buses.
My second.
I have a motion by Carla, a second by John, any discussion?
Yeah, just a quick question. Uh, I probably missed it in the paperwork, are, are both of us's diesel?
Well, I could've told you that, how much do they cost, but, uh, I've got it right here. CE International, two hundred and fifteen, two hundred and fifty horsepower, three thousand points. Do you know if they're diesel, Brittany?
I believe they both are. We talked about maybe one diesel, one diesel, I believe that's six two, I believe they're two.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. I knew what I was talking about there.
I ask that every year.
Uh, one hundred gallon diesel fuel tank upgrade there, diesel, yes sir.
Okay, there we go.
All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen, Discussion and Possible Action on the Second Reading of the Revised Policy Zero Three Point Two Two Five Classified Expense Reimbursement.
I make the motion to approve the second reading of the Revised Policy Zero Three Point Two Two Five Classified Expense Reimbursement.
I have a motion by John, a second by Carla, any discussion?
Is this second reading or first?
Second.
And that's at a cost of fifty-nine dollars per diem, per day, is that what it is? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and Possible Action to Task the Bath County Board Attorney to make recommendations on both the Bath County Schools Resource Officers Contract and the Bath County Schools Resource Officers Contact, Ta- Contract. I'll second. Any discussion?
Yes, is there any problem table miss, till next month, if they're gonna cause any problems?
Talked with Brittany about that, she seemed to think we're fine. I think the, the SROs keep paying, and so it's just a matter of a little finesse.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes. Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen, Other Business. Item sixteen, Motion to Adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion by John, second by Brenda, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
We guess we have discussion, but, all in favor signify by saying yes, yes.
Yes.
Opposed?